Which line of business is capable of the. Uh now, but willing to approve, no, that's motion to approve.
I'll say.
Yeah. Now, that for, that's for both the work study session for January five and October fourteen. And the major team for regular. All, all those are favors separate.
I.
Or the proposed thing. Now moving on to the meeting, which is the zoning code text memo, section three.
All right, sure. Thank you for, good evening. Thank you again for having this meeting one week earlier than usual. As next Tuesday, as I said, because you all well and supposed to be holidaying. And glad we're in the name of working, three weeks after our last meeting. So this is involved for our work space session on October fourteenth. Regarding state law changes, uh necessitated this zone code text memo regarding how. Designated cases among other types of cases are handled and viewed administrative. Just as far as a quick recap of what was discussed, three weeks ago, this whole annual capability. Two, four, seven, which was signed into law back in May. We shall authorize administrative personnel to review approved site on development plan, scientific, slot management, block size, number of classes, not class, not minutes. Without a fault here. Specifically authorized administrative personnel to review approved synergy for the project, since now the fault carrying. And in fact, it's a very important part. And as you call from when this was made official, with its law staff, our legal counsel working behind the scenes, working. Uh with neighborhoods to find the best solution in order to preserve individual character. And but not still at state law, and that's going to be a tricky balance. After we had a work space session, we had a first reading at city council last month, uh there was a lot of. Opinions about it, certainly justly so, because this is a big change for us. Now, in my presentation, they're just being read that this doesn't change any party for the doctor. The thing with those who swear, it's still have a designer view point that is subjective. Make sure that can have a conversation with the ERB, anything on hill, happen, subject of conversation. Anything in this unhealthy property, we anticipate having a development agreement with and would have a subject. Conversation with designer people. Also, it's not effects, any of our H O A files, I'll jump ahead, I'll jump back. So I have most of these under our law. All that H O A is that I have designer parks, greens, the build, tracts, caches, some tariffs, added tariffs. The most of the peninsula, the Guteray out. All those that have active functioning orange associations that have designer people working continually. To subjectively review and approve these sorts of things, as independent of the city. However, though, still put those sorts of neighborhood characteristic protections in place. So we're very, ironically, we're very thankful for those H O As that continue to resist, as is the work that we're somewhat handled to. Okay, uh we're recording the presentation. So what this does is the effects section reorders going towards administration. Considerably three point oh three, which is the duties and rules of the Tony administrator. In city, which will park those city manager, and I act as the best mean as in planning them. And our designer review board will just the following section of three point oh four. Now again, as this is related to what we saw last month, just so we're all on the same page, so now that we're still receiving forward that is created to take. So the administrator shall review approved site, not designer review plans, et cetera. Or could be advised through measures and what the man is saying as far as the end of the digital, you know, uh. Two of architectural background on the city, uh. Council number and two of the law. Minor applications will not be presented. Whatever is the most sweet, personal accounts, you're through conversations with board members. We have taken the whole section not previously for D R V and those. Those contravenously, this would also remove all defenses going forward to D R V and sign modifications. What's this new construction? And then, even then, that we buy from. And this is just the first really elements coming both. This is on the process, however, we still have to rewrite. The designer review section, because designer review section is very subjective in nature, and that is without people. So that has to go to an objective review. Or once again, anything with a developed agreement, we can still say, let's look like the municipal park, have the Santa Barbara feel. I like it, I don't like it, eat this, do that, that sort of conversation can still exist. It's the contractual situations of the development. Or funky task, funky review of signs. You'll see, I'll carry a presentation next spring as far as I am not saying, you use the volume shakes of light. This, that, this, that, this, if you have a window, must include three windows. Must have forty percent demonstration, you know, placing, all that has to be prescribed. I, I'm looking forward to it, I see the settings are trying to define and make a rest of the use of success. Every single kind of situation within the park. It takes time, so it's not going to stop. The other, that's second, the third change that is still forthcoming is the subdivision. All this, all prior procedures as far as taking a bit of the plan and putting it up into individual residential lots. That is outside of zoning codes, but it's not something you will all see, and different chapters of, uh, probably across the council or changing. Any questions on what it says about? Right? When we vote. So again, it is examples of subject, already not used, they've aesthetic leasing, giving for users, best houses. Most privately, it's intended to achieve our earliest desire negotiation. But that's a little bit, and maybe it's simulating one. These are all just kind of base right before the sign of the code. Again, this all stems from the homeowners association of Arizona, they're very. They have, they're very long, has have influenced our legislative bodies in order to make a lot of change, or state law changes, such as state. Past several years, they believe that local states are essentially a roadblock to the further. They think however, honors, propose, and undefinable requests prevent them from getting homes to your office for leasing. This also does, though, is. You know, my job, the job of these delays as possible, by having these sort of protections. I say everyone who might have a particle of bots, because I can't really, what a car will box have and does not have, is going to create a form. Also is going to create unwelcome. Uh, just build environment, as unless, and I will get to the point of our objective standards will be so robust. That we don't have a situation that is unpleasing. But until we have that sort of situation, it's right there as far as. Can't afford objective standards without getting, nor do I have objective standards written. So, or a copy of the sponsor. And, you know, I mentioned this last time, the only current objective standard within the code. The entirety of section thirty nine is basic colors, they use our actual, which we have a C ten percent of a single laws. So it's all mentioned in our code that is defined. It will measure everything else is more to the last size as far as local gain fee of harm. All right, I know this, it's right. We love interest in this mission, because they continue to keep character to be found. And again, very new presentation, yeah, I appreciate coming a week early to have this conversation. By code, I am not able to have a work space session and a recommendation here during the same night. We have newspaper ads and the patients that we have to put out, say, that this is a public. Hearing any recommendation, change notes, and after, separate these, then I think I have to say to go at a time. So our request is to, rather than, uh, the code, the file P C twenty five P two. Starting the deadline and clean versions provided in the packets, and if you have any questions.
Randy, what I mean, we get in the big picture here, so we are covered, uh, so we allow with our H O As within our community. It's close to me, this, this change really is going to affect. Any person or homeowner that may purchase a home. And want to possibly completely tear it down and build it. Uh, I, I don't see this applying much further than. A homeowner, um, you know, their interest in changing their property dramatic.
Right. Bishop, that's. And yes, that is an example, the irony is that the ones most affected are in the walls. Because the villagers, the terrorists, the greens, the, they're covered by H O A divisions. This affects every shed, the bottom, the burglar, the steamboat. Uh, land state change, like a new, new windows, new front door, I had someone call, they must put a new garage door on there. All of that is reviewed, approved by D R V, subjective feedback, the conversation with that. Just all of that, so I have to rewrite since there's technology. Say, this garage door should go before tonight. And it's not my life I don't like, it's garage door panel of seven feet by eighteen feet must include the windows on the top panel and run all that out. So this is for anyone who else do, any improvements or modifications to the property on the outside of them.
Is it possible to create a pseudo H O A that is overseen by D R V? For the area within the wall? Using their own authority? If, if you basically the restrictions of an H O A's or see what was written in the law? Is that possible? Because then it could be subject, right, and then we wouldn't do so. And then if the A pseudo H O A, that's sort of mean, everyone has to pay fees, you know, every month and things like that. But I mean, I would think that that would solve a lot of problems, are that.
Uh.
But have we solved the issue now?
Right, well, there was, there was large conversation at last month's, uh, city council. I don't, I'm, I'm not referring, but I will, I will, uh, I will tell you and, uh. Try to avoid paraphrasing, but through the quotation. Even, even having a D R V, now I'm panicking around about. Even having a D R V that provides advisory comments, we could still be challenging. Because the letter of the law is administrative personnel. And even me as administrative personnel bringing items to an appointed board of residents. Maybe you outside of both of law. Now, to your point as far as that pseudo H O A. With, with that in mind, the idea that the city would be involved in that sort of creation or something, would be even further away from the state law. If the residents and lives to, to that independently of the city. By all means, they can do so, do that, do this, even. And here, back here are three cities in the valley, like twenty six, twenty eight, these houses, I don't have it as a beginning. Even us still delaying administrative review approval to ready for D R V, meaning that they, but four weeks later. Is a bit of shitty ground all of that. So I don't know that there's an asset or ability to, to something along those same lines. Need further set all of that.
Seems as though this is. Really impressive for those who are with law, because most of the people that know here. This area, of any of this, and, um, I don't know if it's even. To me, that seems like it's a question of charade of the law, that forces upon, when I realize it's coming from, you know, the state of. You know, the governor's office, I understand that, but basically the governor's saying, you've got to do this. And we're talking very quickly at trying to figure out what to do, and it's going to impact thousands of residents in the political part. And they don't have anything about this, and one of the reasons a lot of people move to within the wall. Is to not have H O As and not have these restrictions and not have to have three plants, you know, on the side of their driveway and stuff like that. And I think that, I think the public needs to know about this, you know, I'm just sort of concerned with that. As jumping to eliminate D R V to, you know, and to move forward with another plan in addressing this, that does kind of my big sense.
But, uh, but if we ever send some bar question, I sent some emails to the board of citizens, I said, one of the past. Eighteen months, we've been trying to make it able, in time with other charities, typing with the league, trying to provide. Alternative solutions. And here's still no shady ground for taking this, this step that we are taking. Now, uh, sure, what about, uh, no, there's twenty eight hundred, thirty two houses in the show park. Twelve hundred with in the walls, and he paid off the rest of the law, different lots of. And. Uh, that's what the essential. Something like a thousand people, twenty hundred, all of that, if, and I had a conversation where it could be, when people come to us, or people come to Rita. And say, I live in the municipal park, I don't have an H O A, they can remind me of. I agree, no worries.
There's only borders in each way, but this is step beyond that. Since being more restrictive and yet it's also, um. It's telling people what they can and cannot do, whereas now it can be considered visually because of a personal policy, privacy. And that's one of the biggest problems, I think, because they are, uh, you know, community.
Yes.
Where things are all different, and most custom communities have H O As.
And that's, that's going to be the hardest part for the next phase of methods. Is hard, our makeup, you know, our designs that I can stand up is, you know, it's actually wrong. I don't want to give a situation for us for to say that evidence. And we're the most wonderful century, but most wonderful farm. I have basically made a cookbook of recipes as far as, if you go this way, you have to do next one. And, you know, it's, it's a real law, just to be, bit, uh, frank, you know, it's a real plumber, and everyone. Is doing the same exercise in all the others, based on subjectivity versus objectivity. And there is this one piece, and I've worked with my counterparts, they just say, try to find the, the, the leads modeling the president to the house. Their model of organs was basically a ounces. You should include five of them, so that's three, if you include four of those, that's two points, you have to get a sort of point, they were a piece of work. It's, it's a huge thing, and it's going to, it's going to, uh, Bishop, basically. Really discourage people from investing in their assets, it's their assets, it's the part because we have, I don't want to, just to go there. But we have to try everything down to the last little bit. Yeah? It's the next level. Especially, uh, okay, first, you guys have those stats, I think those stats would be interesting. Of how many homes and how, if this H O A, that doesn't need to be shared. Yes, it's eight, maybe twenty, that's what I think that, okay, that should be, I don't, I don't think this is. Uh. In your opinion, Brandon, you as a city planner, like, what are your major concerns? With this as far as from a homeowner's, from a current homeowner's perspective? This is so vague for me, I don't, I want to speak out, I have a funny mouth. My, 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 let's. Well, I'm just trying to like, as you as a professional, I just said, you're a professional, and you get it up, and I'm kind of putting you on the spot, I'm trying to like. What, what should be like the main concerns, because I think this can be very overwhelming, if hearing this at the. So I'm, I'm curious, like, what do you really see as, like, maybe the, the top three things that really are? So, okay, sure, so, the, and, uh, we professionally. I do not want to expose saving. You want to, nor do I want to give the danger of, of my religious day, trap. So I must follow the state law first. So I, and I have legal opinion that still contain the advisor going D R V. Is still something that I will place on, because it's, in my professional opinion, I guess, the state law's intent. To administratively review and approve. For me to tell homeowner, I can administratively, administratively review, approve. Your proposal, but we wait four weeks till the next year, we, for that to then give. An opinion that is now object. So during D R V, if anyone says, I don't like it, I like it, as a subject and. An opinion, essentially, I have to disregard. This is, this is very formal as far as how you find success in this, so. The good news is once the code books written, just for the rest of the, and all of them. And it's not there in that process, review and rewriting to the code, so. Uh, D R V will still have the law, and they're good as for T A's. Because then the, the city plan is still matter that involves the city. You can contractually simulate a subjective review legal to D R V and subject of legal city council. Even though that's against state law. It's the project, and this is Joe S is approved, it's tractioned, simulated, still have to go with those mechanisms. It's still maintain, it's kind of, I'm not going to have a T A for every homeowner that must invest in their house. That's going to be the hardest part of this, is like, choose one option, buy the Spanish revival, and here's, here's your recipes of what you. And it's going to become, it's going to, like, it's, it's going to become so, uh. So the room actually is far as I, I'm looking, I have the. It's going to be North Bay, Spanish revival, okay, my circle is white, that's Talu, it's sort of. I can't say, I wish that, Hararkit was, you know, history. I can't, it's, it's all gone, this event, right, which is a real problem. So, okay, so, so like, what, what do you, what do you envision as like the consequences that we're not understanding? Like, you mentioned, do, are people going to invest in their home, like, for me, that's a potential consequence, yes, right? You have any other that? The consequences, so I'm going to come off that thought. Like, oh, I'm doing, uh, I have nineteen seventies, I have top of the range or something like that, and I don't have a lot of rating points. So is it, sorry, if you invest, or do I have to come before you with a code of them every single time I've forgotten? One of those standards, every time I add a recipe to the book, it's a three month process, and that resident has to wait three months before they do it. So it's, that could be another unfortunate consequence of the situation. Again, none of this is what we want to do, it's all handed to us by very good lobbyists, almost. I talked about it last time, work space session, they try to eliminate local zoning completely. And as in previous matters, the governor has been, as far as just everyone with four houses in the acre. Or if you do multi-tenant housing, and local zoning control is beyond me, what would be something? Just, it's your land, who are we to get in the way of powerful use for land? She, could you imagine? It's the calcification of Arizona. So. This, this was used to compromise between lobbyists and the governor, that's why she signed this version, which we're all around, I think, that. And it started my last, is, you have to build out this, this recipe, which like offices, and plus, yes. Is that something that we're eventually going to approve, yes, when, and like, how are we going to like? Like, read that, or process that, or be a part of that, or like, that seems overwhelming. Yeah, you're right, yes, that's correct. Uh, we can do it in sessions if you want, we can do still family, and then, so I have to do it for still family, ultimately. Commercial, office, industrial, it all has to be prescribed for every situation. You know, part of it says, it is a T A, and they were just, who's the T A, two months. I have to do for every grandma, perfectly seen them. So, yes, there will be a text memo in the spring, that is a, essentially a complete strike through of section thirty nine. A new section thirty nine, the zone code, describes this to every detail as far as how everything. So, uh, you will see this all in work space session, recommendation here.
So are you going to have to, you know, find things like roofs, I mean, I, I, I mean, to me, this is just like. All, I mean, I just think about like the fine houses that I'm around, and literally across the street, they have a shaperoof. Next to them, they have stone roof, told by a year ago, um, across the street from them, cement, or, I think it's not over. And next to me, he, it's concrete roof, he just put it, I mean, spent several hundred thousand dollars and redoing his house, it's gorgeous, it's beautiful. But his house is like within century modern, a ranch house, next to me, we are all extremely different looking properties, and I mean, this is just. Talk about five and also, I'm not talking about even our entire street, so I don't, I have no idea how this can work. That's kind of what, where I'm coming from with all of this, because I mean, it's like a, I've known so many people who, I mean, it's like everybody I know who's. Updated their homes and stuff, they said, this is a hundred thousand dollars, doing it, and they all look beautiful, and they all fun, fun, all great, and. Sign review board, and, but they don't all fit into one category, so I just look like, you don't know how. You can do this, and I'm just, I don't know, and, and I don't know how it's possible to tell someone, well. Because my mindset is this way, when we came up with this recipe, and your house doesn't really fit into that recipe, you still can do what you want to do. Because that's what's going to impact our programs. And that's going to cause a lot of problems, and, 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 whoop. Prevent people from wanting to modernize their homes and everything else too, and, and it will make people not buy properties and resale and stuff like that, so. I mean, I just, I have a lot of sense.
The, so, uh. It is tonight, it, this is just on the process. This is on the subject versus subject, this is subdivision plan. Excellent. I said to you on all of you, this Thursday at the R B, uh, Joe S just will be here, he has already joined the speaking, so. Welcome to attend the R B meeting, we'll have, uh, this is first, then we'll hold an executive session. You're all welcome to attend the executive session to have, and do conversation. Would they turn it on, do I ask the, the limits to D R B, uh, it's not, I, I don't, I don't want to do an opinion of that. Uh, just to continue to have this sort of, uh, often of conversation as far as what it's. Because I, I get to rewrite section thirty nine of the code first, that's very good objective of the station. So, uh, it's still our, the evening and for, uh, city council here, Julie, tomorrow to at least. I'm going to comply with this before December thirty first. Now, I'm still not a compliance with the objective conversation, or am I compliant with subdivision planning? Do I hear very often, it's, uh, it's not working, they rose to be able to. So, uh, it's still our request was evening to move forward with this. There are explicitly text and then regarding the ball, designer, that's true regarding the ball, designer. Happy to continue this conversation, including in, on Thursday night after the regular, it's, it might be. Welcome to get additional questions on this.
Well, I'll put a question. It's made me slightly wrong. The last video, uh. You made a comment, you were talking about how things totally black, but it was snuck out logs. Take a minute and explain the neighbors and shell. I remember you talking about that, that it was, in there was something automatically happened. Down from the road, it wasn't necessarily as obvious.
I'm sure you have to give a specific, or it was something that can be actually passed, but what was good?
Definitely not, never, I should remember, now we'll do it in. Statue or whatever, something that.
Oh, thank you, yes, I apologize, but thank you for the, um. Before this current legislative session. This exact plan, which quotes a may in state law, which is really weird to have state law that's a may. Like you can't follow with it, they don't follow state law, it's odd. So the thing that changed this session was the may was struck and changed shut. So there's no longer an option to use process changes, it's now a must. Process, and specifically the state law this year says. City or town by ordinance shut off, essentially. They're required to be, as your designated age, create a testament for this to be approved and made as new orders.
Right, are there any further questions? All right, we'll go through that. We're going to have a site for this question.
Actually, we just want to go to the next, uh, two, uh, two, uh, on this end.
Oh, that would be a good one. Would somebody like a name?
Sure. I have a recommendation approval from zoning code, text in a mid file, or P C twenty five fifty two. Subject to the red line, the urgent provider. Is there a summon? I'll say.
We have a motion, second, all of us in favor to prove the fact of the nation, say aye, aye, ayes. Okay, now, will you return them, make a motion to return? There was to return this, I understand.